That doesn't necessarily follow that there'll be cigarette butts accumulating there. Uh, I detest cigarette butts or any kind of litter. And I think that speaks poorly of people who engage in that activity. Uh, we need to encourage people not to engage in that activity. But I, you know, I'm not real passionate one way or the other. I just want developers to have incentives to come in and build what we're envisioning. And if they can't make any money doing that, then, you know, that's gonna be difficult to even get it built. And seems like the more space or the, the, the less the regulatory environment there, the less restrictive those regulations are, the more likely we're gonna have people come in and build. And I like that aspect of it.
Okay, sure. Well, my proposal would actually allow more, a larger building footprint, so it would increase the building, buildable area on each lot. Um, as far as the transformation of retail, it is true that we are seeing a huge shift of retailing to online because the reality is that people don't enjoy getting in cars, fighting traffic and going to big box stores. But what is succeeding is experiential retail. And the idea of that you're not necessarily going to look for a specific product, but you're going out to enjoy day shopping. And you want to take your mother out to brunch and then go to, uh, you know, stop in and try on things. Uh, because as good as, um, online retailing is for, uh, standard-sized products, they still have not mastered, uh, clothing, um, and fit for people. So experiential retail and providing a superbly walkable environment for retail is absolutely critical to keeping that industry alive in our community. Um, and I forget what the third thing was that I was going to address. But, um, it, it does increase the buildable area, oh, the cigarette butts. And I'm just telling you what we saw on the walking tour yesterday, and I wish you had been able to attend. Thank you.
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I love hearing this debate, particularly from two of our, uh, new urbanists on the council because it really gives, uh, I think, a good context of people who really agree about the environment we wanna create and different ways to do it. I just wanted to share one thing that the staff participated in, in the ULI Healthy Corridor, uh, sessions. We actually also had to walk in, and there was a lot of feedback and discussion during that, um, educational opportunity from people and how they felt in various parts of College Avenue. When we were walking north to, towards Evelyn Hills with no sidewalk, uh, on what would've been like a cow path, um, how unsafe it felt, how safe the east side of the street newly constructed felt until we got down to, um, is it Trenton there at the bottom? Uh, where the road is much more, where we lost the tree barrier and some green space barrier, uh, because the right-of-way was compressed at the time that that building went in. Uh, the council waived the requirement of the right-of-way dedication at that time. And so that, um, while that is a build-to zone, uh, I would say that an overwhelming majority of the people that were at that session talked about not feeling safe walking on it. And that's really where the staff, I think, took the initial position of that, that ten feet is good. There could, you know, twenty-five could be too large. That's why I love hearing this debate, um, because I think we could all point to examples where, you know, twenty-five might be too large and zero can be way too close. Um, and so depending on where you are on the street and what the interaction is. Uh, I said this last time, I'm just gonna say it again because I think sometimes we forget that we're making decisions that if we see bad consequences, we can change. This isn't a five-hundred-year decision that can never be looked at. And we would encourage you to, um, i- if you're going to look at an amendment, maybe look for a compromise between these two, you know, at ten to fifteen, if twenty-five's too far. But, but going to zero, when you look at this entire area, um, I want you to know that in the Healthy Corridor study, there are sections of the street where that just simply doesn't work, um, and feel safe in creating the environment that you wanna feel. And I think as staff, having heard that from the public, it was important for us to make sure you, we share that with you. But thank you two for the debate, 'cause I loved hearing this.
Yeah, I, I, and I do too, and I, and I would like to mark you here, uh.
Well, I was going to add to this. I wanted to hear this debate because I did have the opportunity to attend a New Urbanism Conference in New Orleans where they're rebuilding. And of course, they have this issue, the build-to, the setbacks, especially as they're looking at redevelopment and trying to integrate the, uh, historical and the, and rebuilding, how they're looking at things. And this is exactly what we looked at when we were on our walking tour in different areas of New Orleans. Um, and I wanted to have this discussion so, so we could visualize it directly with College Avenue. If you're familiar with New Orleans, a lot of the, uh, activity for the residential areas are in the front yards, not the backyards because of the setbacks, even in some of the larger buildings. And there's also a very vibrant, uh, uh, commercial, there's still vibrant commercial areas that do have some setbacks that are around a pedestrian, a wider pedestrian area. But then, of course, as you get down to the center of the old city, everything is zero lot line. So I wanted to hear this discussion, and I'm thinking about it since I do live in this neighborhood and I, I was raised here. And I, uh, I do think about the safety when you walk up and down College Avenue. And I also don't want to develop a tunnel, uh, in some of the areas along, uh, College Avenue. So I probably, even though I seconded this because I wanted the discussion, and I think that we will have to probably revisit this as we start looking at developments, I most likely, Sarah, will not support this. But I wanted the discussion, and I hope that people will visualize this and take the opportunity also to walk up and down College Avenue because we can always come back and revisit this if there is a, uh, a moment of, um, inspiration, that someone has some good idea or we can amend it. But this is exactly the, the conversation that I was hoping that we would hear. I'm putting a kind of my walking tour experience in New Orleans along with some of the exceptional speakers that we heard throughout the nation where this, uh, development of walkability, connectivity, uh, pedestrian activity is certainly the topic of conversation in redevelopment for higher-density downtown areas. So thank you to Matthew and Sarah for bringing the points up, and, uh, I just wanted to mention that. Thanks.
Yes, I, I think this has really been a, a really good discussion because, you know, my experience with, um, sidewalk next to the street's been Razorback Road, which I know they moved, they traveled down that road pretty quick. But that was always, that's one of the reasons when we did the other section. You just, you know, you can, you can feel the cars just brush by you as you're walking down that sidewalk, on the old sidewalk. But when they put the new apartments in, they put just a little bit of green space in there. And I can't tell you the difference on how much safer you feel having a little bit of space between you and that highway. And College Avenue is a very highly-trafficked area. And even though we've got a wider sidewalk there, it's, you know, I guess my experience on Razorback Road made me a little more edgy even walking down the wider sidewalk. So, I mean, and I, I understand the, uh, zero-ten foot lot line. I agree with you on the, uh, um, the, uh, retail. I think, I think that's a really good point on the retail. I just have a, I'd like to see a little more space on there than just a zero lot line on that major thoroughfare. It's really good. Um, I know you're going to ten feet, I just don't know how comfortable. I would feel on that either, that would be. So that's just sort of my two cents. I'm not really weighing, and I just, uh, well, I am weighing, I guess. I prefer a little more space there than a zero lot line. Maybe that'll work. I just had, I'm just a little bit, just my experiences on Razorback Road, walking that, it may be a little more edgy walking right along the highway, cars going by. Anyway, any other discussion on this? All right. If there's not, we're gonna vote on the amendment now. Uh, Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Eddie?
No.
Kenneth?
No.
Dutch?
No.
Latier?
No.
Ma'am?
No.
Ray?
No.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
No.
Okay. Now we're back to the ordinance itself. We are on the third reading, if you wish to go there. I mean, we need a motion and a second to go to the third final read.
Uh, the clerk says we're actually on the third reading right now.
Okay, good.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't understand her, we need a motion.
I want to be sure I was tracking right on this. Adele?
I move we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
Mark?
I'll second that.
All right.
I hit that wrong.
Is that good? Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Eddie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Dutch?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon? Yes. An ordinance, uh, an ordinance to amend Section 166.21 Downtown Design Overlay District by amending the applicability section to include College Avenue Overlay District and to enact Section 166.26 College Avenue Overlay District.
Okay. Any final comments from the council? All right. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Eddie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Dutch?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Kenyon?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. Now we go back to number one, correct?
That's correct.
I'm gonna read that, I'm gonna read that again. An ordinance to rezone all parcels within or near College Avenue as shown in Exhibit C of the Planning Department's Agenda Memo comprising about 24.62 acres. And, uh, we are on the, we, you know, we've gone through the second reading. We would need a motion and a second to go to the third and final read. Is that correct, Sondra? That's what I have on my notes anyway. And so. Not that I know of. I think we moved the amendment stuff to the second one, if I got all that straight.
That's what I think.
Now we're back to the first one, after we've amended the second one.
This is the actual rezone?
Yes, this is the actual, this is, actually. John?
Mr. Mayor, I move we go ahead and pass it.
Well, we need to go to the third and.
All right, I move that we suspend the rules and go to the third and final reading.
All right, do we have a second? Mark?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to go to the third and final read. Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Eddie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Dutch?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Marsh?
No.
Kenyon?
Yes. An ordinance to rezone all parcels within or near College Avenue as shown on Exhibit C of the Planning Department's Agenda Memo comprising about 24.62 acres.
Okay. Any final comments from the council? Matthew?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, this has been a long process, obviously, and something that's been talked about for more than a decade, more, more informally. But I think tonight is almost a historic occasion for people that have cared about college or have ever seen that old picture of college with the trees and the dirt road and, and reminisce for, for something like that. Um, the, I think the amendments we made tonight were really important. Certainly, it made me a lot more comfortable with, with the program. And I wanted to take just a second to talk about what might happen up the rest of college. The rest of the street is just as important, if not more, more important than this part of the road. Um, I think we're dealing with this first because it's close to the downtown and we've made a multimillion-dollar investment in the infrastructure. So there's a lot of justification in us taking on a, a battery zoning like this. Um, from a development perspective, though, it's clear that the remainder of college as you move farther north is, uh, more ripe for development than this part, um, primarily due to parcel size and topography and hydrology. There's a lot of stuff in the floodplain here, there's a lot of stuff that is, uh, on the side of a hill or at the top of the hill or at the bottom of the hill or parcels with all three, um, characteristics that make developing these, especially on small parcels where you don't have a lot of room to work with and you have to play the game of inches to fit things on the site. Uh, it, it makes development very difficult. So, so part of my comment, I think, is about managing expectations about what this change means for us. I, I don't think that we're going to see, uh, a lot of development starts, uh, arising from, from this action, uh, at the level that we're hoping for. Um, the vision that we've cast for what the street's gonna be is gonna require us to do more with the road. Uh, if you've ever walked the road, or if you make a point after this to go walk, walk the road, you'll notice that just the sound of the air as cars move through it is louder than you talk. Um, so for, just from an experiential perspective, what it means to be a human on the street, uh, we aren't able to do and participate in the kinds of activities that we're talking about because the street itself does, does not support it. So we've still got more work to do. I, I don't think anybody should think that, that we're done. Um, with this is just one step in many, and, and so that's my first point, is to manage some expectations. But the second point is, I think we need to keep doing this and be aggressive about moving this kind of program farther up the street. Um, we've probably got most of the techniques and mechanisms and, and tools that, that we need to do that, but maybe not all of them, maybe we need some new ones. Um, I'm hopeful we can, we can figure that out in the next year. Um, and I think that the community is eager for it. There's a College Avenue redevelopment community, um, hosted at the Chamber of Commerce in addition to, uh, more than a decade worth of documented and memorialized public input calling for, uh, redevelopment of, of this street as we move farther north. Um, so I, I think we've set a precedent here. Um, I think as we move farther north, the development, uh, interest increases. I think the allowable, uh, intensity in terms of building height and, and allowed uses increases as we go up the street. Um, at lea- at least that's my sense of things. So I hope we won't, uh, delay unnecessarily in looking at the rest of the street because I know that there's even more, uh, even more interest in, in redeveloping the rest of it just because of the conditions, uh, that are there. So I think tonight's a, a great start, and I hope we can go farther in 2018.
Okay, any other comments? Sondra, would you please call the roll?
Eddie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Dutch?
Yes.
Latier?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Kenyon?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. That was a great discussion, by the way. All right. Under new business, number one. A resolution to thank the Walton Family Foundation to authorize Mayor Jordan to accept a Design Excellence Program grant from the Walton Family Foundation in the amount of $1,770,000 to fund a design of an interactive outdoor cultural arts corridor along the Razorback Regional Greenway to authorize the issuance of the, of a request for qualifications with the condition that only firms pre-approve of the Walton Family Foundation may respond and to approve a budget adjustment. Peter?
Mayor, Council, good evening. We're very excited to recommend, uh, acceptance of this $1.77 million grant for the Design Excellence, uh, Program for the design of Fayetteville's Cultural Arts Corridor from the Walton Family Foundation. As you may be aware, the Walton Family Foundation's Design Excellence Program provides financial support to government organizations, school districts and nonprofits in Benton and Washington Counties for the development of spaces intended for public purposes. Uh, the program provides world-class design and planning expertise for the design of those projects. Uh, the 2017 Design Excellence Program focuses on parks and green spaces, uh, and outdoor elements specifically. Qualifying projects were required to meet five criteria. They must make a compelling case for how projects increase public access to the space and strengthen surrounding neighborhoods. They must include a funding plan for their project. Uh, they must leverage their connected trail network, uh, develop a, uh, excuse me, demonstrate a commitment to sustainability and embody a spirit of innovation to encourage, uh, more visitors to the area. In October, the City of Fayetteville submitted a grant application for the design of a 50-acre interactive cultural arts corridor alongside the Razorback Regional Greenway in downtown Fayetteville. The corridor is anchored by the Fayetteville Public Library and the Fay Jones Natural Area on the south end of the corridor. Uh, and to the north is the Walton Art Center, the Dixon Street Entertainment District area, and Theater Square, which is under construction and also is a Design Excellence Program Award winner. Uh, the Razorback Regional Greenway is the connective tissue between all of those elements. The city specifically requested design assistance for improvement of infrastructure and public spaces, uh, within 12 acres, uh, on that 50-acre, inside that 50-acre area. Um, the design components could include festival spaces, public plazas, outdoor classrooms, streetscapes, green infrastructure, trail improvements, natural spaces and other outdoor, uh, elements. Um, a reminder that this grant is for the design of outdoor elements only and cannot be used for the design of public buildings, but can be used to design or allocate space for the footprint of those, uh, potential public buildings. Uh, the selected recipients, um, of the Walton Family Foundation's Design Excellence Program receive 100% of the design funding for their projects. Uh, Fayetteville's design, um, timeline has been identified over a 24-month time period from December 2017 through December 2019. And, um, projects are required to utilize the, uh, a list of design consultants that have been pre-selected by the Walton Family Foundation's Design Excellence Program. And you'll notice that in the, uh, resolution, there's a whereas clause that addresses this requirement of the, uh, of the grant. Uh, by accepting this grant, the city is committing to funding the implementation of the final-approved design by 2021. Um, the Walton Family Foundation is aware that due to the size, uh, of a construction cost for this project, the primary funding source for the project would likely be, uh, a bond-funded, a voter-approved bond fund. Uh, other CIP funding has been identified as supplementary funding to aid in the construction of that project, but that CIP funding would not be enough to construct the full project. Uh, thus, there's also a whereas clause in the resolution that addresses the need for, um, a voter-approved bond, uh, support to, uh, fund the final construction of the project. Uh, in your packet, you'll find the program letter, um, the grant acceptance program letter, our Design, um, Excellence Award Grant, uh, a map on the final page of the, uh, of the grant program, um, shows that 50-acre boundary, and then there's a budget adjustment for the $1.77 million acceptance of the grant award. Uh, finally, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the Walton Family Foundation for their generous support on this particular project and the many other projects that they have invested in in the City of Fayetteville.
Mayor, I wanna add a couple of comments to Peter's, uh, agenda report. One, I wanna thank Peter and his team who worked, uh, hard on putting this grant together, application for the city to even have this opportunity in front of us. I think people don't realize that the Sustainability and Parking Division does a lot more than sustainability and parking. They get handed a lot of projects that don't fit anywhere in the city, and we really do appreciate their work on this. And Lee Folsen, uh, for his work on writing this as well. Um, I, I do wanna make it clear because I think when we went out to do this, uh, grant application, we were extremely concerned because no one likes to ask someone for money in an area that's sensitive that people have a history of not agreeing on. Um, and so we have a lot of stakeholders with a lot of various interests. We have council members on the redevelopment of the lot, um, and the establishment of corner buildings in our downtown master plan. We have the Walton Art Center where proximity parking of their patrons is important to them. We have Dixon Street Merchants who use, um, the south end of this parameter we're talking about for festival activities. We have a, a, um, urban trail that connects, uh, from our library, uh, Prairie Street, actually, all the way, uh, to this area. And we have a lot of ownership. This, while it sits in Ward Two, it's owned by everybody. I think we, we hear that a lot. And so, uh, one of the key things that we have made clear to all of our stakeholders is for no one to come with a preconceived idea of what must go where, that we actually have the benefit of, uh, someone else paying for world-renowned design architects to deal with all of these issues and give us the best opportunity, um, possible. And I think that it's exciting in the sense that we've been able, uh, to do that. We've also made it clear that when you're talking about a project this size that is, um, really life-changing, and it goes back to, uh, Mayor Jordan's vision in the state of the city that he wanted to create a, uh, downtown entertainment district that would basically become the Times Square of Northwest Arkansas, uh, this is a step in that direction. Um, it's a big, bold vision, and it's going to require big, bold funding, uh, to make that happen, which means when you talk about future funding of bond issues, uh, we're talking about projects, uh, of the size that, that must go in that. And, and the Walton Family, we've been clear to articulate, uh, will require voter support, which is why we have to get this right, uh, for the council and the people who would actually support it in the future, as the council chooses to go that direction. Um, but I want you to know, I think, and hopefully we'll hear that, some of these comments from the public, uh, tonight, but we have met with key stakeholders, um, and I believe we have a really good, open mind towards this project and a chance to really get it right, uh, and truly have place changing here in our city.
Very important project. Um, all right. Any comments, questions from the council on it? John?
Mr. Mayor, I'm just con- I'm just thinking out loud. We're spending, uh, I'm very grateful for the contribution from the Walton Family Foundation, and they're giving us 1.7 million in design money. What will the projected cost of the project build-out be? Do we know that?
We've done a very high-level, uh, preliminary estimate, uh, construction cost somewhere in the 15 to 20 million dollar range.
So we'll be asking our voters to approve bond issues to cover that expense?
We will.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I do wanna, uh, say for Councilmember Latour that the 1.77 million was, um, established by using 12% in saying, if, if that was 12%, which is normally designed as between 10 and 15, so we took the middle percentage, and that's how we got the range that we gave you. We don't really know until we.
Yeah.
See a design.
All right, any other questions? All right. What public comment do we have on this?
Mayor, Council, my name is David Johnson. I live at 1512 North Crestwood. Um, I think we all acknowledge that this city has a rich heritage and visionary development, transformational development. Um, if we think about the downtown square, if we think about the town center, if we think about the Walton Art Center, um, we think about Theater Square, our library, um, a long history of, of development that has truly transformed our downtown district. And when you lay this against those efforts and that vision, um, I think it really stands as an opportunity for us to propel ourselves far into the future in terms of a destination, to be all destinations and not just Northwest Arkansas, but in all of the region. So I, um, request that you authorize the mayor, um, the ability to accept this grant.
Thanks, David. Who else would like to address this on this? Cam, gonna bring it back to the council. Matthew?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I couldn't be more thrilled about this. Um, uh, yeah, I, I think one of the hardest things for people in elected position to do is to, um, make decisions, uh, with, um, uh, in, in consideration of what residents who don't live here or maybe aren't even born yet want. Um, even though, you know, there are gonna be as many of them as there are residents here today, uh, in, in the future, and I think this is one of those rare times where, um, where, where we're able to do that with, with, uh, with a clear vision. Um, the, a decision to build thi- to build something like this is, um, it's really hard to overstate what, what its impact is. Um, pu- public spaces like this, um, that, that are in other parts of the world, uh, are extremely durable. Um, C- Central Park will outlast, uh, you know, it, it, it could outlast the United States government itself, just as many of the plazas in Europe, in France, in Italy have outlasted numerous governments and survived, um, uh, even revolutions. Um, so when we talk about time scales and we talk about making an improvement in the city on the order of centuries, um, that is what we're talking about tonight. And when we talk about costs as a useful benchmark, we have, um, uh, we have budgeted, or we haven't budgeted, but we have accounted, um, the cost of a sports complex on the south end of town at more than $20 million. Um, a sports complex is unlikely to be as durable as this kind of space or as important, um, to our identity as this kind of space. This is the kind of thing that will define not just who we are, but who our great-grandchildren in Fayetteville think Fayettevillians are. Um, so I, it, it's really hard to overstate this, uh, uh, the impact of this and, and future generations or, or the value of it today. Um, how, how do you measure the value of? How do you measure the value of witnessing something like a proposal? There's not a place to go in Fayetteville today to watch things like that happen. And this could be that sort of place. This is something that could be so core to our identity as to, as to give us the optimism that's required to really reimagine what Fayetteville can be. So, I know that this kind of fuzzy optimism is, you know, it can be a little tiring when you hear it from politicians, but this is something that will be very real for us. And this is something that people who we don't even know about yet and who aren't even born yet will appreciate forever. It's every bit as big and impactful as something like Mount Kessler or maybe even more so. So, I can't wait to see what the design process looks like. I appreciate so much that we are advising people to abandon their preconceptions. I think there can be absolutely no sacred cows whenever we are designing a space that is intended to fulfill such a high purpose. So, whatever your preconceived notions are about where buildings should be or how much parking should be there or any other characteristic of that, it's very important, and I think we all start from a blank slate and go to a very high altitude here and start thinking about what this means for us on the scale of centuries. And I wish that we could do that so much more often in our decisions because I think it leads to better, more wise decisions. This is a chance that we have to do that. And so, I hope we can all support this, and I hope that we can all continue to support this when the funding proposals come in and those decisions become more and more difficult. We need to remember what it is we're trying to create here and not confuse it with something that might be more temporary in nature.
Okay. Any other comments, the council? Well, we need a motion and... Matthew?
Mayor, I'd move approval.
Mark?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any final comments from the council? Counsel, I would like to say that this was something that we worked on for a long time. And I certainly want to thank Peter and his staff, the chief staff, and everybody that worked on this, the Walton Foundation, and everybody that worked with us. You know, there's a lot of decisions you have to make, and one thing that we, you know, that we do around here, I tell folks all the time, I'll throw out 10 things, if I hit on three, I'm in the baseball hole thing. But, there are certain decisions that you make that if you're going to be the best city and if you're going to be as progressive as we claim to be, you've got to be, you've got to have the top schools and the best libraries, you've got to have the best trail systems and sidewalks and planning for the future and protecting your green spaces. And you've got to mix all that together to make a totally, totally wonderful place to live, work, and play, and that's not easy. So, sometimes you cannot stay basically in the safe zones. You have to go into places, as I say, sometimes I have a sign in my office that says, if you never depart, you never arrive, you have to move, and I've said this before, will say it again, you have to move in places you've never been before. And if you don't do that, you stay right where you are, and you're stuck, and your city's stuck, and then this city doesn't get stuck. We keep moving, we keep progressing, and I believe we truly live in a wonderful place. And certainly, our arts, is Theater Square and the Walton Art Center expansion and moving into this arts corridor is an area that will put us, I believe, truly on the map, not only in the region, but in, not only in the state, but anywhere in the United States. So, that's why this kind of project is so important to us, to us. So, with that, Sundar, would you please call her up?
Eddie?
Yes.
Kenneth?
Yes.
Punch?
Yes.
Latour?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Canyon?
Yes.
And thank you all very much. And moving right along, the resolution expressed the city council's acceptance approval of Theater Square's incorporated pledges and financial commitments as sufficient to ensure completion of Theater Square's $31,500,000 theater project and to authorize Mayor Jordan to invest promised $3.1 million as construction reimbursements pursuant to the contract of June 28, 2017. Paul?
As you all recall, in March, you approved a budget adjustment and agreed to participate in funding of the Theater Square new constructed building to the tune of $3.1 million. At that point in time, you authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with Theater Square to actually create a contract with them in regard to reimbursement or transfer of the money to participate in that funding. In that contract that was agreed to by Theater Square and the mayor, there was a provision that before any reimbursement would be made for that money, that we would come forward to the city council to approve a contract for that reimbursement. And one of the issues in there was to ensure that there was financial funding to complete the project at that point in time. As Chief Financial Officer, the mayor instructed me to look at the finances of this project to ensure that it would be completed. I did so, identified that this project, which will round $31.5 million, had sufficient funding to be completed. I personally looked at underlying documentation, see that about $21.3 million had been pledged to the project. In addition to that, our best bank had arranged for a loan of up to $18.5 million for funding to ensure the completion. So, based on that, I am recommending that the financing is there to complete the project. Now, the one area or area of concern or risk I need to point out to you is, as I looked at the construction contracts, Theater Square does not have a performance bond with the contract manager. Performance bond financially secures the completion of the project. It's normal in a project of this size. The city's legal required if we went into a $31 million project, to have a performance bond. However, Theater Square did not feel that the cost of that bond was worth securing it to ensure completion by the contract manager. The contract manager is Baldwin and Shell, a large organization, good reputation, so therefore, you need to evaluate the risk of whether or not the project will be completed. Although this, I would not say is a significant risk, it is a risk, just like insurance. You don't need it until something happens. However, our commitment is $3.1 million in this project. Our facilities management director will oversee the work done for which we are reimbursing in this project before the reimbursement is made to Theater Square, and we will ensure that we have all the waiver liens, things of that nature, so that is secure. But, that is a risk I need to point out to you, the lack of a performance bond. Based on all of it, when I look at the bottom line, however, I would recommend that we enter into this contract and move forward with it, but I'll be happy to answer any questions.
What questions we have, Paul, on this? Okay. What discussion do we have from the council on this? Martin, you want to address this on anything? Are you good, or?
I just always appreciate the opportunity to stand here and say thank you for your faith in both Theater Square and also the community that's been very supportive. Campaign's going very well, construction also going very well. We had some really cool aerial footage that we just got a few days ago, which we're about to share out, but the basement is complete, and over the next few weeks, you're going to see vertical walls rising up from the theater volumes, which I think a lot of people are going to take notice.
I might ask that you silence your phones, please? Go ahead.
That's all. We are on budget and on schedule and really excited for what's next.
Okay. Any questions from Martin? Mark?
Martin, I just think it's important that we understand the decision of not going with a performance bond on this larger project, and I would like to hear your reason and your assurance as we move forward so that we have a record of that.
Yes, thank you.
Because we certainly do want a complete building regardless.
We feel the same way. Yes, I'm joined here, by the way, by our board treasurer, Todd Yeslow, who wanted to be here to reflect that this was a considered decision by the board. It was a recommendation by our board facilities chair at the time, Bob Kohler, who had been an owner's rep on a number of projects. It is, in public projects, a very common, in fact, required, legally required process to ensure a performance and payment bond on the project. It is an option on a private project in looking at Baldwin and Shell's reputation, their capitalization, which is extremely healthy, and also the complexity of the project and size of it relative to other projects that they have done. Our board did not consider it worth the investment of what would have been around $160,000, $180,000 of, in part, public funds. And so, that was a decision that they made, and we relied on it, and we are now six, almost seven months into the 19-month construction schedule, which obviously reduces the risk as well. But, it's also a month-to-month risk. We pay monthly and confirm that the work has been completed, so the actual exposure is relatively minimal. I will also note that all the subcontractors have been required to be bonded, so the only work that does not have a performance bond on it is the Baldwin and Shell's portion on top of those bonds. Thank you.
Todd, did you want to add anything?
No, I just want to reiterate that it was a decision that was carefully considered by the board, one that we think that we did our complete diligence on. We understood that we did have an option whether or not to bond this project or not. We realized that investing the money for a bond would be over-cautious. And as the mayor said, sometimes you just have to take a risk in order to get things to move forward, and this was a minor risk that we thought we could assume in order to build this theater for the community.
Okay. Any questions anymore? All right, thank you all. What public comment do we have?
Peter Tonison, Ward Three. Prelimarily, I'd like to welcome Mr. Smith to the council. I was here the last meeting and didn't realize what the crowd was all about because this whole thing blew up so quickly. And I just wanted to point out that I am disappointed that there were apparently only two aldermen voted that there be a special election. I'm a big believer in democracy and in having the taxpayers and the citizens involved in government. And here, we had a quarter of the city that was going to be represented for three years, and yet the council decided that it would appoint Mr. Smith, and I have nothing against him, I know nothing about him. So, I'm disappointed. I mean, we had special elections on December 8th of 2014, September 8th of 2015, and August 9th of 2016 that were all paid for by the taxpayers, at awkward times, I might add. And yet, when you've got a quarter of the city being represented for three years, they couldn't do a special election. The only thing I would say is that in this time of year, that Jesus came into the world unexpectedly.
Peter, we're discussing Theater Square right now.
I understand. All right, well, I'll get to Theater Square. Here we go then.
Yeah, let's stay with me, stay with Theater Square.
All right. I was here during that March meeting, and I remember Mr. Tennant was the only alderman who asked that there be a business plan, and he seemed concerned about it, although I think in the end, he voted for this. And I still want to know, why is there no business plan? In the letter of February 15, 2017, Theater Square said that they had a commitment of $12.5 million. In fact, they had $3.5 million from the Walton Fund, which was for design, and that went away from Northwest Arkansas. That went to charcoal blue in London and Marvel Architects in...